Ready? Okay. I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest School District Number 67 Board of Education Meeting for Tuesday, July 26, 2011. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson. Mrs. Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Julian.
Here.
Mr. Penderski.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Schuler.
Here.
Mrs. Wald.
Here.
Thank you. We'll begin with the President's Report. Welcome, Board Members. This is our last Board meeting before school begins. As we get the month of August off, it's our vacation month. And it's going to be a busy fall because we will be very engrossed in looking at resumes and interviewing and selecting a new Superintendent. So that will begin on September 6th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day. We will have a Board Joint Workshop with District 115 and the Consultants to discuss the profile of the new candidate based on all the data we gathered this past year. That concludes the President's Report. Dr. Griffith, the Superintendent's Report.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Members of the Audience, thank you for being here tonight. Karen, especially you. Hope you're having a good summer. Just a couple of quick things, Board Members. Also, we hope summer activities are going well for you and your families. If you look around the room, you'll notice that we've done a little bit of decorating here in our Board Room. These are enlargements of photographs from Lake Forest High School that were sort of in a closet somewhere, and I just started putting things up around our facility. I'm pulling up some things that are District 67 related too, but I didn't think anybody would object to these kind of pictures because they are from the 1930s when Lake Forest High School was founded, and this is their 75th anniversary. Rather than just have nothing on the walls, we're just doing this all around the Administration Center and here in the Board Room, too. Secondly, I would like to just draw your attention. Tonight on the agenda is the Board Calendar for the 2011-12 School Year. And also, I've attached for you the Board Presentation that you're going to be getting from the Education Committee and the School Administrators on how we did on our education goals last year. We recently worked out a calendar for the Board to receive various reports, so you'll want to take a look at that, and probably Leslie Fisher will comment on that in a few minutes also. And then finally, I'd like to just bring this to your attention. Everybody, you have this at your Board place. This is the Friday Workshops. Board Training is a really, really good thing for Board Members. It's best practice. Administrators, Principals, Teachers, all of us are into professional development, and the Board has its best opportunity at that on November 18th with the Joint Annual Conference being held in Chicago. There are work sessions there. In the past, we've had, District 67 Board has had 100% attendance, or almost 100%, so we've often had really good turnout for this. So please contact Pam Burke as soon as you can. These sessions do fill up, so you won't want to do this as quick. We won't want to really delay on doing this, so if you'll get to Pam, she'll get your registration taken care of. Otherwise, have a good rest of the summer, and we'll see you when school starts.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. This brings us to public participation. If there's any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on a topic not already on the agenda. We will move on to our reports, and 50 Strong. Dr. Griffith?
Yes, Board Members. Dr. Julie Cooley is going to share something interesting with you, and he's going to hit the lights for us to help us with that. So, Dr. Cooley, I think you'll enjoy this brief report from Julie.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. Whoa, that's loud. Is that okay? I'm pleased to be able to share some information with you tonight to kind of raise your awareness, and hopefully the community's awareness, too, of an initiative called 50 Strong, which is come from our Social Emotional Wellness Initiative. So we've had, as you know, very robust school initiatives for several years, and our school initiatives started around the adults in our environments, the teachers, and how we treat each other, and both the high school and in District 67. And from that, naturally, we would look at other groups of adults in the community. So there were several of us who got together and formed kind of a steering committee to see what we could do with emotional wellness in the community. And so as you can see, these different logos, you see the various participants who now are officially members of 50 Strong. And you can see all of the schools are involved, the Graduate School is involved, Lake Forest College, the Historical Society, and so on. It's quite a great group to work with. So as we met over time, we looked at why. What could we do together as a group that would bring some meaning to the community and kind of to each other? And so we decided that we could look at what we were doing in emotional wellness initiatives in the schools, to look at principles and ethics, and do that at this level of the municipalities in the community. So we were looking at creating a collaborative venture and seeing how we could work with one another, much like shared services do. So what would that be like for other members and other organizations to look at how we might do some things together, always knowing that it would be around ethical kinds of So we looked at the need. We came up with a solution, and then I'll talk a little bit about the results tonight. So we wanted to broaden our organizational focus across these organizations and look at the emotional side of all the challenges that we face. And what we decided to do as a group to see if it would work, and I think it's worked pretty well, is to look at professional development, or that kind of thing, just skill-building opportunities across the organizations, and share them, and in that same opportunity, network with the individuals. So there are a lot of people in the room today, in addition to me, that have attended these events. Of course, Dr. Griffith and Andy has attended. Our Business Office members have attended. And so Human Resources, as an example, across the various organizations might get together. And we'll talk and build skills, but we'll also talk about getting to know one another, what we might do together beyond that. So we really have leveraged our organizations to do this skill-building because we each contribute, whether it be time, money, and that kind of thing. So these are some of the topics that we've worked on over time. And we did a needs assessment from the various organizations, but we talked about resiliency, how to lead during times of change, how to rebuild during times of change and do it well, how to be inspiring in leadership. And then this fall, we're going to be looking more at building dynamic teams. And if you can see on the very first, on the end of the slide there, we started in 2010 with a full-day leadership training. Forty-three people attended, and if I just take you down to the half-day leadership training, we had 56 in attendance there. But overall, we've had 82 different people from all these various organizations in attendance. This is a roadmap that we've developed, and it kind of includes not only the large events that you saw displayed on the slide before, but also the smaller things. As an example, if one of the organizations is doing, arranges to do a webinar on a topic of leadership or ethical practices of some sort, what we'll do is we'll network amongst ourselves, and the city did this last year. And we all went over to the City Hall for something that they had arranged, but everyone was invited to attend. So we've done that a number of times. Another thing that happens is some of the events we hold, the smaller events, we do lunch and learns, and we give executive summaries of some important leadership work, and then we'll discuss that as a group, but we'll create kind of a little agenda or a different professional development plan, a really brief thing, that others can take back into their workplaces and use again, which also has occurred over time. So this last slide just kind of shows you a visual impact. These are just kind of glowing dots of all the different people who have attended from all the various organizations, and we believe that when we engage in ethical practices and positive interactions, that there is an actual neuron switch that goes between us, and I like to think that actually glows, and so we're looking at this. But again, very meaningful to our organizations. A couple, just a couple of little examples. At the Lake Forest City, the City of Lake Forest, they have so much changeover, and they basically have one of their departments in the buildings and grounds that is virtually, all the leadership is brand-new. And so they were able to take into some of these events, not only to get to know each other, but actually to enhance their skills in an environment that they wouldn't have had available to them otherwise. And I know the college feels as though this is very important in these tough times, that they believe that they've had to cut back in such a level on these types of leadership-building activities that they wouldn't have them if it were not for 50 Strong. We're considering crossing that 50 out to go to 80 or so, but we'll see about that. But very pleased for your Board support and Dr. Griffith's support, that he lets myself and Ann Whipple also as a key individual in the planning of this, so that we use our time to contribute this way along with the other organizations. So we thank you for that. Any questions?
This would seem to be taking shared services another step.
Yeah, Board Members, the actual different projects throughout the last two years have been really quite engaging. I think it's bringing all the various public service and semi-public service organizations together in a way that actually would never happen before. So it's strength-building within the community. Dr. Cooley is really one of the real leaders, two or three leaders, to help make this happen, and has been quite influential, I think, among all the various organizations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to our... Why does my agenda say? Sorry? Okay. Now I've got the agenda. Okay, this brings us to our Board Committees. First is the Board of Education Committee, Leslie Fisher and Bill Anderson.
The Education Committee last met June 27th at the Administrative Building from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. A lengthy report was presented at our June Board Meeting on June 28th. We did not meet during the month of July. The Education Committee is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, September 20th, at 8:15 a.m. We intend to present the details of summer curriculum work performed by our teachers at our September Board Meeting. In addition, we will also report on our social-emotional performance goals, including the new DPM Web Program, Where Everyone Belongs, that will be put into practice to help ease the transition for incoming fifth graders. Performance updates on our specific district goals will be presented throughout the months of September through December.
Thank you, Leslie. That brings us to the Board Operations Committee, Lori Rose and Rick Schuler.
Thank you, Julia. The Board Operations Committee met recently on July 25th at 8:00 a.m. here in the District Administration Offices. The April amendments were approved, and Alan Albus presented a year-end goals report with operational goals. We spoke about the Shared Services Grounds Initiative, as well as a considerable subject of discussion was the topic of whether or not to proceed forward with a demographic study similar to one that had been done by the Caserta Group several years ago. And after discussing the declining enrollment in the district, as well as the possible costs of such a study, combined with the fact that other groups that Dr. Griffith and administration officials approached, such as the city, were not at this time interested in sharing the cost of such a study, we decided that we have enough in-house data and resources to really compile a very solid demographic look-forward snapshot and look-forward from our own resources. So at present, that is the plan that the Operations Committee discussed. Our goal on the Operations Committee, our overall operative goal, is District 67 facilities and operations will be constantly improved and updated based on education, educational needs of the district. So in keeping with that goal, it's entirely consistent to look in-house to try and get the demographic data at this time. In addition, the Operations Committee has discussed a new initiative to hold meetings at the various district buildings. And while holding a meeting, we will take a tour and be greeted by individuals who work and are very familiar with the building. So we'll have a very upfront, close-hand look at the various strengths and deficits of the buildings operationally. And I believe our first meeting is scheduled for Cherokee Schools, is that correct?
Cherokee, that's right.
So our September meeting will be at Cherokee School, and we will then tour the remainder of the schools. There was a brief discussion of staffing changes, which included the addition of an Assistant Principal at the Middle School. I think you'll hear more about this from other committees, as well as replacement of two full-time office positions with part-time employees at Deer Path Middle School. The Board will be presented with a detailed staffing report at the September Board Meeting. Carol White, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, reported that only two vendors have bid on the Deer Path parking lots. So included in our Board Packet tonight is a proposal to rebid the Deer Path parking lot lights. We also discussed briefly the renovation of the Deer Path Auditorium, which was funded by donation from the Peck family, and we hope to have some photos for you of the newly renovated space, which represents a considerable effort and amount of resources from the grant, or I'm sorry, bequest, to share with you in September. And finally, in our ever-ongoing vigilance to conduct and complete maintenance in light of the current financial climate, there was a brief discussion of remining at Cherokee School. There's some insulation that could be replaced with a better product, so our staff, in an attempt to really find the best practice, went out and found a vendor to replace the insulation, and my understanding is that will be done while those students are present in the building prior to the commencement of school. Our next meeting is scheduled for September. Do you have the date on that?
September around the 20th, but I'd have to look for it.
We'll get back to you at the end of the meeting. Rick, do you have anything to add on the Operations Committee?
No, I do not. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you. Okay. I guess this concludes the Operations Committee Report.
Thank you very much for a very thorough report. That brings us to the Board Finance Committee, Jeff Penderski and John Julian.
The Board Finance Committee met on July 19th at 7:30 a.m. here at the Administrative Center, and we talked about three primary topics. First of all, the review of progress towards the 10-11 finance goals. The second topic is that we discussed options for refinancing or retiring district debt. And the third thing we discussed was the 11-12 tentative budget, and I'll make a couple of comments on each. With respect to the review of goals, finance goals for the 10-11 year, this is something we do on an ongoing basis, and we spent about 15 minutes of that, of the meeting, tying off what I consider tying up the remaining goals for the year. I think those will get posted when we're done with that work. The second topic is refinancing the district debt. As most of you know, we have approximately $6 million bond issue outstanding and pay approximately $500 and some thousand, $570,000 a year in interest. Because of a provision in the bond debt, we can call those bonds and refinance them starting in October of this year, and market conditions may make it favorable for us to do so. So our Bond Council reviewed some options that may save us up to $78,000 over the life of the bond. So that is increasingly attractive if interest rates stay low. More to come on that. And finally, on the 11-12 tentative budget, I'll let, I'll leave the details to Alan, but it's a real belt-tightening year. The budget goes up about a percent and a quarter overall, and the labor costs are the big driver in the contract, up about 6%. Most of that's by contract. And so that means the rest of the spending has had to shrink about 5%. So Alan will go through that in great detail, I'm sure, this evening, or at least a pretty good level of detail. Anyway, that concludes the Finance Report.
Jeff, is the rate on the bonds fixed? Do you know how many years are left? And is $78,000 a potential savings per year?
78 is over the life of it. The net present value is 75, and I'll leave the rest of the details over there.
The districts worked with William Blair over the years, and really on a weekly basis, they run these scenarios for many, many clients to look at opportunities for refinancing. And their threshold has usually been a 3% net present value savings. So when they ran this, I think, if my memory is right, it came out at like 3.3%. It's not a lot of debt that's out there, so there's not a lot of savings. So actually, the Finance Committee threw out some different scenarios that I thought were very creative, that we'll look at between now and September, and then come back with a recommendation if that window is still there and open.
Thank you. That brings us to District Committees, where we act as liaisons. First, the North Suburban Special Education District, Jeff Penderski.
There has not been a NSSED meeting since the last time we met, and so there, and I don't know when the next one is scheduled.
Thank you. The Illinois Association of School Boards and Ed Redd, Bill Anderson.
There's no report this month.
Thank you, Bill. Professional Development?
In the spirit of summer vacation, there is not a professional development report this evening.
I do have a question, though. I don't, I don't think you're professional development anymore.
I don't think I am either.
Okay. I think it's, well, we'll clear that up. Okay.
Is it John Julian?
I think it's John Julian.
It's not an inside joke, is it?
Okay. That brings us to the Curriculum Coordinating Committee and Lori Rose.
In the spirit of summer vacation, the Curriculum Coordinating Committee has not met since our last meeting. We'll give you a robust report in September.
Thank you, Lori. The Spirit of 67 Foundation also has not met this summer. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 13th at 9:15 a.m. That brings us to the Tri-District Committee, Julia Wald and Rick Schuler. And the Tri-District Committee has not met.
Has not met either. I did look up the Operations Committee. It meets September 21st at 8:30.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
September 21st at 8:30 a.m. Okay. Are there any other committees that may have met or not met this summer that a Board Member would like to report on? Seeing none, that brings us to our recommendations. First, we have the approval of the fee schedule for Freedom of Information requests. Dr. Griffith?
Okay, Board Members, Alan Albus will describe the recommendation.
As you can see tonight in your agenda, we've had another barrage of FOIA requests, and under the current law, we are not allowed to charge for staff time for research or compilation of the data. However, the law does allow for the charging of copies in excess of 50 for any request if the Board establishes a rate. So we're recommending tonight that you do establish a rate of 4 cents per copy for any copies in excess of 50 requests, and then we'd begin charging those fees.
So that's a fee of 4 cents per, per copy?
Per copy.
Is there a fee, additional fee for multiple electronic? I guess electronic, you can't charge anything, right?
What is the total cost that we have been spending, big picture, on the numerous FOIA requests from the same individual?
In this grouping here, these came in the last couple of days of June, in the very early part of July. We started keeping a track on a whiteboard in my office, but we're in excess of 50 hours of staff time. And that staff time is myself, Kathy Hughes, Lisa Gillespie. We've used Cornelius Dubose, who does our technology, on a contract basis. And then we've probably gotten additional 10 hours at least of attorney time in this. And that's in a two-week period.
Board Members, I think to, especially on the legal side, 10 hours of attorney fee is...
Two dollars per hour.
Yeah, no, the rates are a little under $200 an hour, I believe. So, you know, times 10, we're talking a little under $2,000 spent this month on FOIAs just in legal fees. So because this is a new phenomenon, we're going to recommend to the Board a budget for the 2011-12 school year that takes into account, sets aside separately all the costs of doing FOIAs. Some staff time involves certainly the legal fees because those are directly, that will be directly relatable to the FOIAs themselves. Anyway, we'll have that presented for the Board in September. Anyway, we'll have that presented for the board in September.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. Any further questions?
Just on the four cents, just where did that number come from?
The statute allows you to charge up to 15, well, let me rephrase it. The statute allows you to charge actual costs not to exceed 15 cents. And I, I think we do a good job on our copiers and our paper purchases that I, we can't justify a cost up to 15 cents. Many, many entities do charge that amount, but somebody's going to be challenged on that at some point, and I just didn't want it to be us.
So, Alan, I, I just have a workflow question, right? Because you really can't predict when this comes in. What, how does this affect the operations of your department?
I think you see the responses. This, this last barrage was very frustrating because, first of all, it comes at the end of the year, so it's a very busy time as we're closing out one budget year and developing new budgets. And in our case, closing out two years and developing two budgets. But also, in the barrage of requests, the same things were asked for in, in different parts of the same letters or at different times. Because, and it, and things have been asked for that we've already provided. So, we have to research what's been provided, when it was provided, and make sure that we've covered our base on that. And then, depending on the request, some documents have to be gone through one record at a time to see what is disclosable, and then what is exempt from FOIA. If it's a student record, or if it's an attorney-client privilege, or if it contains personal information, that gets to be very, very time-consuming. And so, no, we, we don't have, when the requests come in, we have five days. Depending on the nature of the request or the extent of work that's required to find the data, we can extend that for another five days. But basically, everything else stops, and we have to address this.
Thank you.
I have one more comment. Alan, could you inform our community the, the tight turnaround deadlines that we're forced to comply with under the current law?
The day a request is received does not start the clock or is not counted, but the following business day counts as the first day, and then we must respond within five days. In that five days, we have to provide the information that's requested, or cite a reason why we're going to extend it another five business days. And then, at that point, we need to comply with what's there.
And those are business calendar days, so if there's a school vacation or?
Right. In our case, where we work the longer summer hours, and then the office is closed on Friday, that, the Friday still counts as a day. You follow state and legal holidays.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Yes, there's no community members there. Do, are there any further questions from the board? May I have a motion to approve the fee schedule for Freedom of Information requests?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is this roll call vote? Okay. Board members, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to our, the approval of the Board of Education meeting date calendar for 11-12. Dr. Griffith?
Okay. Board members, oops, sorry. We are, have put together the regular meeting calendar for the 2011-12 school year, commencing with the September meeting of September 27th. This is consistent with what the last couple of years, District 67 Board has met the last Tuesday of each month, with the exception of the holiday months of December and March. So, it's the very same plan that we've had the last few years, and we are recommend, this is required to be posted after this meeting, and we will do so should you concur with this recommendation.
Any questions, board members? Any questions from the audience? Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting date calendar for 11 and 12?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the adoption of resolution to display the tentative budget for 11 and 12. Dr. Griffith?
Board members, this is the time of the year that the budget work that's gone on for months has, is now ready for presentation to the community, and Alan Albus will do a very brief summary of what, to this date, it has taken, and what we anticipate will be posted for public presentation. Alan?
Good evening again. Tonight, we're going to ask you to place the tentative fiscal year 12 budget on public display. By statute, the budget must be on display for at least 30 days prior to adoption. A public hearing must be conducted prior to your acting to adopt the final budget, and a notice must be placed in the newspaper of general circulation in the district announcing the date and time of the public hearing. That's all captured in the resolution that'll be presented to you tonight. The resolution places the budget on display beginning tonight. It authorizes the publication of a notice in the newspaper, and it establishes September 27th at 7:00 p.m. as the date and time for the hearing on the tentative 2012 budget. Now, the budget figures may be changed up until the time the final budget is adopted, so you're not making any commitment tonight to any of the figures that are included in the budget. Before I get on to the FY12 budget numbers, though, I'd like to give you an update of our current financial status in regard to our overall finances. Over the past several years, the district has negotiated a teacher contract that's reflective of the current economy, implemented certified and support staff reductions, and implemented line item budget reductions. Some of the certified and support staff reductions have been due to economic reasons, and some of them have been due to slightly declining enrollments. But the result of all these actions has left District 67 in a very strong financial position. The district ended FY11 in the black, and over the last couple of years has built up the fund balances to prepare for a change in tax increment financing revenues that will occur in the FY12 budget. So, I'm going to take a little time and talk about that, because we use that term a lot about TIFs and tax increment financing. So, tax increment financing districts, or TIFs, according to the Illinois Tax Increment Association, are a mechanism for governments, are, are a mechanism to help local governments jumpstart economically sluggish parts of town. The first TIF was established in 1952 in California. Illinois lawmakers authorized TIFs in this state more than 20 years ago, and as of June of 2006, 49 states in the District of Columbia were using TIFs as a catalyst for local developments. How do TIFs work? Municipalities can identify areas within their boundaries that due to, and this quote is from the association as well, "economic and physical deficiencies are underdeveloped and likely to stay that way." Now, many times, that can be due to lack of infrastructure in an area, so no roads, sewers, utilities. Once a TIF is designated by municipality, it can sell bonds to put in the initial infrastructure and attract development, whether that be business or residential, to an area. Then, the theory of a TIF is that the incremental increase in tax revenue from that development, again, whether it be from a business or residential development, goes to pay off the bonds that provided the initial infrastructure. Now, there's a shelf life on TIFs. By statute, they can't exceed more than 23 years. So, whether you know it or not, there is a TIF in Lake Forest. There's an economically blighted area at one time. And I had a map, I got a map of it from the city, but I couldn't make it work on here. So, I'm going to have to just try and describe it to you if you're not familiar with where it's located. But the TIF includes the West Side Train Station, the McDonald's, Sunset Foods, and the residential development behind Sunset Foods, also some residential development near Everett School, and Everett School itself, and that's important for reasons I'll explain in a moment. So, again, in theory, a municipality makes an investment in infrastructure to attract development, and then based on the incremental increases of tax revenue, uses that money to pay off those bonds over a set period. So, the TIF has to be managed, and by statute, they're managed by the municipalities. And the municipalities, then, are required to have an annual meeting, and ever since I've been employed with the district, I've attended this meeting. Lake Forest, I think, does an excellent job with the TIF that was here. And when you look at the things down in the area, in addition to the business development of Sunset Foods and McDonald's, there's been a lot of public improvements as a result of the TIF, and those have included the West Side Train Station, the West Side Fire Station. It's paid for a portion of the fiber optic network, which we were, we also contributed as a partner with the city on, and it's also paid for two additions to Everett School. So, when will the TIF end? Well, for us, it's going to end this year as far as getting a disbursement. Now, we're getting a disbursement from the TIF because of the improvements that were made to Everett School, but there's going to be a one-year gap in FY12 before that property comes on our tax rolls. And so, we've known about that for a long time, and we've planned for that. So, the TIF will close soon. We will levy for the TIF next December, as will the city, and as will the high school district. So, you'll see an increase in our levy. That doesn't mean existing property owners will pay more, but you'll see a significant increase in the percent of the levy come next year. Now, because we've known this was coming, in fact, at the end of negotiations in the fall of 2009, as we plugged all the data that we knew at that time into our negoti, or into our financial forecast model, we anticipated a deficit in FY12 of about 1.4 million dollars. The deficit between the revenues and expenses shown on the screen is 1,258,440,000 dollars. So, we feel we're right on track with, with what we had projected, what was going to happen, and where we're at. In fact, because of declining enrollments, probably a little bit better financially than, than we had projected. But this isn't a surprise. I guess that's the biggest thing I want to communicate. We weren't shocked by this. We've known about it, and we've planned appropriately for it to accommodate this one-year gap. The other option was to slash programming during that year to try and bring things more in line, but then, then we get into not maintaining continuity of program, and that was important. So, in summary, the budget and staffing reductions over the past several years have kept us in a strong financial position during really the most severe economic downturn since the Depression. The district ended FY11 in the black. The proposed FY12 budget contains a deficit due to the change in the TIF revenues, but again, that's not a surprise. It was identified several years ago and planned for. And so, tonight, the administration is recommending that the board approve a resolution to place the tentative budget on public display and establish September 27th at 7:00 p.m. as the date and time for a hearing on the proposed budget. Any questions?
When the taxes come back on from those new properties, are they, will they be the same amount as the TIF, or?
Right. What, what's confusing, I think, to people is if you live in the TIF and you get your tax bill, you see District 67 or District 115, but instead of that, that revenue coming to us, only, only the value of the property prior to the implementation of the TIF comes to us. That's why it's incremental financing. But any, anything above that initial amount goes into the TIF fund to pay the bonds. So, it's really transparent to the homeowners, and many people, I don't think, even know that they reside in the TIF.
Just another comment about that. Bill, it was the, the City of Lake Forest built out all the infrastructure in this geographic zone in the General Everett area. So, it's a very defined territory, and all the, the tax revenue within that area then has been directed to paying bonds. When the fire station and the, and the train station and other infrastructure improvements were near completion, District 67 met with the city council, and we talked about the possibility of helping us with the expansion of Everett School. So, then, at that point, most of the TIF funding was directed toward paying off District 67 bonds for the expansion of Everett School. And so, not, these are monies that have been kept in the tax increment district to benefit District 67 specifically. So, the relationship we have with the City of Lake Forest for this kind of project speaks to the extraordinary cooperation between our two agencies, for which I think we have a lot to be thankful for the City of Lake Forest in general, and to the citizens also for helping us without a tax referendum to a major, if we doubled the size of Everett School, actually, over a two-year, we did it, actually did it twice, over about a six-year period. So, all those payments, those bond payments are now due to come to a conclusion, and there'll be a year gap before, from the closing, closing of the revenue for our portion of the TIF, and then reopening the TIF being directed then into the general operating budgets of all the taxing agencies. Just a real quick footnote, Lake Forest High School has not been a part of this. And so, for the first time in 23 years, next year, or a year from now, they will, that, that tax revenue will then come back, that portion of the tax bill that the high school represents 25% will now come back to the high school. So, it's going to be a good thing for all of the operating budgets in 2012 and '13 when that happens.
I was wondering, Alan, if you could highlight some of the ways in which we've planned for, you mentioned that we prepared for it. Could you highlight some of the, the fiscal measures that were taken in anticipation of this?
My plan had been, because this is a multi-step where you put it on display, you have the public hearing, we usually make a presentation in September, we'll drill down further into where the staffing reductions were and some of the budget changes that we've done, and, and where we've, you know, where we've ended up.
Any other questions, board members? Any questions from the audience? That, do I have a motion to approve the adoption? May I have a motion to adopt the resolution to display the tentative budget for 11 and 12?
So moved. Second?
Thank you. Just voice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. And this brings us to the rejection of the DPM lighting bids.
Well, board members, this, Alan, by the way, did a, you did a really good job of trying, summarizing a pretty complicated area, so thank you for that really excellent job. But this is sort of the Alan Albus Show tonight, so back, unless you'd like to direct us to Jennifer Hermes.
Do I get paid by the item? In your package tonight is a memo from Carol White. We went out to bid on lighting, parking lot lighting replacements at Deer Path. We received two bids. Now, normally, when we do a project like this, we, we have a pretty good idea of where we think they're going to come in at, in working with our architects. These bids came in about double of what we thought, and so, we're recommending they be rejected. We're going to go back and work with the architect on the scope. We think that had something to do with it. And also, since we opened these bids, the city has talked to us about possibly looking at the installation of LED lights in the Deer Path parking lot. Operationally, they're a lot more efficient, and, and at least what I'm told, I'm not an expert in this area, that the cost and implementation of them should be about comparable. So, we may have some discussions about that, and that may affect the bid specifications before the rebid. But we would anticipate coming back to you in September. This doesn't delay the project. The lights would go in after the parking lots completed anyway, and most of the infrastructure is there, so it's replacing the, the poles and the ballasts and things.
Any questions, board members? Do I have a motion to reject the DPM lighting bid? Oh, any questions from the audience? Do I have a motion to reject the DPM lighting bids?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Voice vote again? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. This brings us to our consent agenda items. May I have a motion to remove from the consent agenda the approval of the items D and E, the approval of the consulting contracts and the approval of the MSU contracts?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So, we'll go ahead with the approval of the consulting contracts. Dr. Griffith? So we'll go ahead with the approval of the consulting contracts. Dr. Griffith?
Okay, board members, tonight what we have before you are four contract for services that, are services that we have in our schools to support various parts of our school district. We have the Ann Whipple, Whipple Consulting Contract for Communication, Media and Public Relations Consulting Contract. We have the Cornelius Dubose, who is our technology director, is on contract services with District 67. We also have a contract with MSU for services for teachers to assist us on a guest teacher basis in the Mandarin program. And then finally, we have a contract for service agreement with Charmed Foundation for assisting us with our social emotional initiative. What I thought we would do is take these sort of one at a time. And I'll say a few words about the contract with Whipple Consulting. Maybe board members, if you have questions or further discussion about that at that time, we could do that. If you prefer to do it this way. Secondly, we would then go to Technology Services and Jennifer Hermes will present that contract. When we go to then Michigan State University, otherwise known as MSU, then Andy Hendrickson will come to the podium and overview very briefly what that contract is about, although we did do that last month. And then finally, Dr. Julie Cooley will do the summary for us on the contract for services with Charmed Foundation. So thought we could do those, be a little easier to do those one at a time. The Whipple Consulting Contract is for a service to, entering into service between Whipple Consulting and District 67 for communication, public relations and media services. This is sort of a wall-to-wall service that Ann Whipple provides to District 67. She is housed on-site for much of the week, but not all of the week. She does bounce around with other duties that she has. But the contract is for, there'll be no increase, no recommended increase in this contract for next year, but it is a $94,120 for service contract. It's all-inclusive of nighttime activity, daytime activity. While there's a specified number of days in the contract, it is very common for Ann to exceed that by taking calls and contacting community members, working on projects for District 67. She, for example, supervises our website also and during the summertime, there are website development activities constantly going on. So Ann has been with the school district for 23 years and has evolved over time to be probably the best, or certainly among the best-regarded media specialists for schools in the Chicagoland area. She's asked to present at state and national conferences. And she also, she does media service support, similar support for Lake Forest High School and is on a per-project basis, and a three-year contract, by the way, with the City of Lake Forest.
Any questions, board members?
I was wondering the duration of her contract with the City of Lake Forest.
I understand that they just signed a, a three-year contract with Ann for each of the next three years.
So I, I have the following concern. As a member of the operations committee, we are considering some issues we're negotiating with the city. And while we have a very friendly relationship, at times it's been, we're negotiating on, because of the economic conditions, financial terms. So I would suggest that the contract as written be amended to include language to the effect that Ann would recuse herself from situations in which the city and the school district was mutually involved. And also that we take a look at the compensation listed in the contract to make sure it's market-competitive in these times.
Recue, well, there's two issues there. I'm not sure what recuse means.
Well, that she would not serve as a consultant or charge for services for, for situations in which both the City of Lake Forest and the school districts were involved. Because of a possible conflict, where, where, to which, to which client should her loyalty lie?
So if we had a agreement to extend the TIF contract and we needed to, with the city, we needed to communicate with our community about that, we would not use, we would go to a different communication service. That would be, I don't see how that'd be a conflict.
Or is it that she doesn't get paid twice? Does she work for the city as well?
She does work for the city, yes.
So do you mean that she doesn't get paid twice?
Not, not necessarily that she doesn't get paid twice, but if she's strategizing and advising on communication strategies, which client is she representing when she's attending, let's say, a city council meeting?
So it's a potential conflict of interest, but in that case, would she not have to just report it objectively? I'm, I'm not sure.
Conflict of interest would be communicating to our parents or our community on a project, joint project with the city. I don't think we've ever had a conflict of interest over that before.
I'm mentioning situations in which we're negotiating with the city. Who pays for what portion of the Deer Path parking lot, for example?
Well, I think I would ask Ann to help us with a letter that would go to the Deer Path parents. Now similarly, the city might have a publication they're putting out on their website explaining to the community rec center parents, or parents or community members. She would be working for both, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't see how that'd be a conflict. What's, what would be the conflict? She, because we don't do this job specific with us, she just, she, her responsibility is all communication services. So for her to communicate, to help the city communicate the parking lot at Deer Path Middle School for recreation center clients and for the parents of Deer Path Middle School, while it certainly is overlapping to two different constituents, I don't see the conflict of interest. I do think that if there were ever any conflict of interest, she, she would, you know, recuse herself from that. I just don't, that would be a really, really uncommon thing to happen. So I think it's a good point, should it, should it happen.
I just think since she's represented both entities for many years and this situation is, is more likely because of the economic times, I mentioned, that it would be something to, to consider putting in the contract and also to, to review the, the compensation vis-à-vis individuals or groups that might not have such a conflict. Potential conflict.
How about this, should it happen, I mean, it hasn't, in the 18 years I'm familiar with, but should it happen, I'm sure that Ann, well, I can assure you that Ann would, would not then participate in some way.
Well, my personal opinion on this, we've had a relationship with Ann for 23 years. And certainly, just the, the personal interaction I've had with, with Ann, and she's, she's a professional. She's working in the field of communication. She's not necessarily consulting on a, a subject matter other than conveying information that we've come up with. I'm not, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Lori. I guess my concern, that, that's a point that I think we could raise to Ann, just to make sure that she's aware and sensitive to it. But given the short term of this contract, I mean, it's a one-year contract. If we see these kind of problems are evolving, I think there's certainly time to, to put that in a next year's contract. Personally, I'm not concerned about that, given the professionalism I've seen in the past and what her subject matter would be. That's, that's the way I feel on it.
Okay, the other question on comparatives, board members, we'll send you a comparison. I, I have some data that I've gathered from comparable, comparable districts. The elementary districts tend to job out their communications to private firms. And also they job out their printing practices as well as their print design work. District 67 used to have a large printing budget, tens of thousands of dollars. And also had tens of thousands of dollars devoted toward printing design, which we've eliminated from our budgets because Ann basically does all of that for us. So we've been able to cut our budgets in other areas that are not a part of the contract, just as now expected service. We do a little bit of print work. We, if we were, for example, to do a community flyer for the whole community, Ann would design that herself. We would have to pay for the postage and the, and the material itself. It was like a card or maybe a, a fold-out or something in an envelope. So it's actually been, from past practice, quite, quite a efficient service. When I became the high school superintendent seven years ago, the cons, the, the communications consultant budget with materials was $435,000. And I recommended to the high school board a, that we hire Ann full-service, all, not just Ann, but all other costs of $135,000. So we were able to save $300,000 by going internal, doing our own work and not jobbing it out to private sector. Many school districts have their own staff. I think Ann is, with, in comparison with some of the high school districts is kind of middle-of-the-pack, low-end. Elementary districts tend to job things out. So we'll gather up as much of that information as we can and I'll, I'll show you that also.
Any further questions? So, do we want to go to the next contract? Okay, so the next is a... Or do you want to do one at a time? Sorry? Okay. So... Okay. All right, so we'll go on to the next, we'll go on to the next contract.
Okay, Jennifer Hermes will do a summary of this for Cornelius Dubose.
I will, thank you. This is actually a contract with EdTech Solutions. We do receive the services of Cornelius Dubose through this, through this service. This is for all of our informational technology programs. Generally speaking, if you think about this, this is supporting our educational initiatives such as the new netbook pilot, which is a really good example. Cornelius would cover everything from the infrastructure, you know, behind the scenes, to the equipment ordering and installation. Would also cover any of the software expertise that we use. He, he knows a lot about, a lot of our systems, so that would cover Power School on the student's side, EdLine on the teaching side, Alio on the financial side. He also has considerable amount of experience in networking, which has been very beneficial as we've gone forward with the fiber optics program. Pretty much anything that touches technology will run through Cornelius and he provides the, the leadership in assisting the district on this. This is a one-year contract with no increase in the amount of $64,575.
And board members, we also have looked at some comparables and can send this to you also, but it's typical that an IT director for a school district be in the $80,000 to $120,000 range. So this is considerably less than those districts that we've looked at comparable to us.
Harry, is he here full-time on these days? Is he our employee only?
He is the director for the high school also, so he's K-12. And he does have full-time responsibilities for us as well as the high school. So he's, is paid a separate contract for the high school.
Is it twice what we have, I assume? And he's full-time between the high school and District 67? He's devoted to the two districts?
Right. How this worked just a few years ago was, Lake Forest High School had its own tech director. Had a cost, total cost of about $120,000. District 67 had its own tech director. Had a cost of about $110,000 to $120,000. So both districts were able to consolidate and save significant dollars on this position over each of the past several years. So yes, it is, this is a position that's shared with the high school. One of the miracles of articulation of shared service allows the two districts to really help each other, learn from each other and still generate significant savings for both districts. District 67's savings are pretty significant with this contract.
Yeah, the, the question wasn't, does he share his time with the high school and 67? It's, but he's full-time between the two of us. He's not doing, spending his time elsewhere?
That's correct. I, I don't know.
His contract calls for 225 days, but it seems like I see him about 260. So I'm not sure, you know, if he's even taking those, but he is here full-time every day onsite.
He's full-time here, 225 days, but he's not here half a day and doing other work for other companies.
He's, he's well, well in, in excess of his time.
Yeah, he's ours. Okay.
So I got a question. I mean, that's a long, I, I mean, I, I'm familiar with what he does. It's, it's everything, right? So what happens when a guy like that disappears? I mean, what's the plan there?
The plan is, in a longer-term capacity, I've talked to Cornelius and he would like to continue. He, he would love to continue to serve the districts, you know, in the area of probably five to seven more years. So we do have some time and that would be something that we would need to look at. We do have other staff members, however, I'm not sure whether or not there would be a succession plan in-house or we would have to look for an alternate solution.
Okay, so it's not just him? Thank you.
Is this an increase over last year's contract?
This is a, this is a zero increase over last year's contract.
Any further questions?
Jennifer, does Cornelius hire other consultants and what budgets are those through? Are they through his, they're not under this contract, right?
We do hire other consultants, generally not through EdTech Solutions, but we'll go after specialty consultants that he has networking relationships with. So we might bring in someone specifically to look at some network component or we might bring in a software expert on a particular component. If, if we did need other services, I'm sure that we could do it either through Cornelius or we would look to do something differently.
I don't think we've done that, though. Excuse me, Cornelius will recommend other consultants, other consultant services to us and then the district itself would do the hiring.
Does Cornelius then supervise them?
Yes. I mean, he'll direct their activity to support that department.
Any further questions regarding the consulting agreement with Cornelius Dubose? So we will go to the MSU contract. Dr. Griffith?
All right, thank you, board members. Again, now we have Andy Hendrickson to briefly overview the Michigan State University Mandarin teacher contract for 2011-12.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith, board. And I want to open, just to say something about our, our immersion program. We got an email that I passed on to Dr. Griffith this week from a family in Minnesota. She says, "My son has just completed his kindergarten year in a Mandarin immersion program in Minneapolis. Fabulous, fabulous," she says. This is the mom speaking. "We cannot say enough good things about the school or the learning he received, though the program was 100% immersion as opposed to ours, which will be 50/50. On the standardized NWA exams in Minnesota, he even made significant gains in English proficiency from year beginning to end." She says, "Some parents worry their child will fall behind in English in the full immersion program. We had the opposite experience." And here's the clincher. She says, "We're moving to Chicago and looking for a Chinese immersion program. Thrilled to see Lake Forest has one. Want to talk with you about it." So this is, this excitement has been continuing for us and our numbers have been remaining steady in the kindergarten and first grades. We did an exhaustive search for excellent and highly qualified, certified Mandarin teachers this past year. We ended up needing to hire three in, in the elementary grades because we lost our middle school teacher, Amy Sun, to Iowa where she'll be teaching full-time in a high school. There are a lot of jobs out there for Mandarin teachers. We had about 12 people in our Appletrack system and of those, six were certified. Although the other six thought they were certified, they weren't. We interviewed via Skype or in person, even flying one in from New York, the other six, and we found one highly talented individual and hired her on the spot. The other five weren't, weren't quality that we are used to in our teachers. And so we're thrilled to have a backup plan and that plan is Michigan State University. And it's tried and true for us now because we've had two teachers, one... And it's tried and true for us now, because we've had two teachers, one in one fifteen, Han Zhao, and Christina Chen in sixty-seven, that this past year have been working under this Michigan State University contract. As you know from my cover letter, we pay Michigan State forty-five thousand dollars a year for each teacher they provide. They do an extensive search for highly qualified candidates in China, begin the training in China. For a year, most of them are in classes that teach them about western, western schooling. And then, the top candidates from the program over in China come over here to begin a three-year master's program. And so, actually, the teachers that we're hoping to get this contract signed for are here at East Lansing and hoping to be coming to Lake Forest, if not here somewhere else. But, they're highly qualified, they're Illinois certified, they're in a master's program, they're taking courses throughout the year via Skype online to Michigan State, they're videotaping their teaching, they're getting feedback from their Michigan State professors in addition to being evaluated by our administrative staff. This is a, been a highly successful outlet for us to find good teachers, and I've interviewed personally these three that are coming, and I couldn't be more pleased. So, we have three teachers in this contract, forty-five thousand each, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for next year. And I wanted to, I wanted to just show you just one thing briefly here. You saw this a couple months ago at a board meeting, where I presented kind of a side-by-side how our Michigan State hired, hired teachers are actually less expensive for us than locally hired ones. We have, in the right column, our Mandarin program, immersion program, and in left column, supposition that we didn't have a Mandarin program. Overall, on the right side, we save about twenty-four thousand. But I wanted to point out two, two pieces there. The top thing that I circled is the Mandarin kindergarten teacher that we're hoping to hire. Her total expense, estimated total expense is fifty thousand, nine hundred. So, that's forty-five thousand dollar contract to Michigan State University. And then, we have about five thousand, six thousand dollars of incidentals that we provide, because this teacher is a guest teacher from China. This teacher comes without any furniture, without a driver's license, without, without knowing how to live in the United States. So, we subsidize, the majority of that is about three thousand dollars that we subsidize over the year for her housing. And that's because Lake Forest is more expensive than East Lansing, or most of the places that Michigan State sends their teachers. So, these teachers each pay four hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars a month for their rent, and we subsidize a little bit more each month, and it's a hundred and fifty or two hundred a month more that we subsidize their housing. We provide a coach for them in the first few weeks to make sure that they get off to a great start, and other than that, you know, some donated furniture, some pots and pans, and, you know, some towels, and, and things like that. But, as you can see, the fifty thousand, nine hundred is quite a bit less than we would expect to be paying any other kindergarten teacher in the district. Or in the third line there, what we're actually paying a locally hired Mandarin teacher, the one out of twelve that we found, is making a little bit more. This is a great, this is a great opportunity, it's a great Plan B. I'd love to hire everyone locally, but in, in the situations where we can't find highly qualified and talented ones, Michigan State has really come through for us, and I hope you'll continue that relationship with them.
And, board members, just to add, our, we prefer to just hire our own Mandarin teachers. That's our first choice. So, as Dr. Hendrickson explained, we went through the process of first trying to find our own teachers that would add into our regular teacher workforce, but because of the large shortage of Mandarin capable, quality teachers, the MSU option has really turned out to be a godsend to us. I don't see this lasting more than a couple, few years. I really don't know how long. I think in the end, I see over time the contract fading away as the demand for Mandarin teachers continues. I think it will be continuing, and, and more certified teachers become available to us.
I think also our district is becoming more and more attractive to the Mandarin teachers themselves. So, as they're become more graduating from National Lewis University, the numbers are going to go up, and our district is going to look even more attractive. So, I agree with you.
Any questions?
It's a big cultural switch for them moving here from China. Have there been any ones that have had problems making the adjustment, or...?
You know, each of the ones that we've had, and we've had four now, that have, five that have come and gone, or, or stayed, and they, they've all loved it. They've loved the hospitality, making new friends, learning the culture, visiting Chicago. They've even traveled as far as Boston and Washington, D.C. The few that we had initially had families back home, and they weren't expecting to stay more than a year or two. That was our agreement with the sister school that we started with. So, you know, we were expecting them to leave. The cultural differences, absolutely. The, the schooling in China and schooling here are still quite different, and that's why we provide the coaching in the beginning of the year, and ongoing if needed. But, that was a real help, this, this last round for us, as well as the Michigan State program provides a terrific onsite training with camp counseling up there in East Lansing with American students. In China, they, they provide experiences where these teacher wannabes will work with foreign, foreign students. So, it's, it's a good program.
Andy, I'm a little bit having trouble reading that chart. I think I've seen it before, but could you give us some guidance on the Michigan State versus hiring our own, how the benefits shake down, like, for example, health insurance? Does their package include those kinds of things, and ours doesn't, or how does that work out?
Yeah, good question. I'll do as well as I can, and I'll ask Jen to help me if I mess up. We figure anyone, anyone that graduates, anyone that's highly qualified, certified in Illinois, teaching Mandarin, is going to have a master's degree, because they get a college degree in China, they come over here, and the way they get certified is, is through a master's program. So, a master's salary is forty, forty-three, somewhere in that range, I think. So, even higher, forty-five maybe. Okay, all right, somewhere in that range. I'm getting signals here. Higher, okay. To hire from National Lewis, a master's teacher, Mandarin teacher that has no experience will be at least forty-five thousand. On top of that, you're going to add at least eight to ten thousand in benefits, health insurance, et cetera. So, you're looking at climbing up to that, the fifty-one and over. You know, you get up to the sixty-three easily. So, I've probably underestimated here in, in this, in this number here, the fifty-one thousand, where that's coming from. But again, single versus married, different types of insurance, et cetera. Does that answer your question a little bit?
No, Andy, what, what are the benefits? In addition to salary, what other benefits will teachers be getting?
No, I guess, I, I sort of, does their package include benefits, so, so for the contracted amount, we're getting the teacher...
Good question. I think I understand now. So, what, what comes into that fifty thousand, nine hundred, which is the total estimated cost for a Michigan State Mandarin teacher? Is the forty-five thousand that we pay directly to Michigan State University in two installments? Is the, say, two-hundred-dollar rent subsidy a month? Is the, is a portion of the coach that we hire, we'll hire one coach to work in the kindergarten and first grade classrooms for the first two to three weeks. Every day, we'll pay that person to do that, and longer if we need to. So, her salary, the coach's salary. We have a transition person, Kathy Pearson, has done a wonderful job taking the teachers to get their social security number, their social security card, or set up ComEd or Comcast for them, to teach them how to get a library card, to do some of those things in the beginning months that'll help them get acclimated to life here in Lake Forest and ride the train to Chicago. So, we've hired somebody to do that at a, at a small fee. We've had furniture donations, but I've had to buy some furniture, too. I was over at the, the Lake Forest Presbyterian Church garage sale again this year, and we had a truck over there filling up with stuff. So, that was, you know, some of our money goes there. But that's all included in that fifty thousand, nine hundred. Their, their health insurance comes through Michigan State and Hanban, through China. So, they get covered that way, and other than sick days and health day, sick days, which we give everyone, which is really not a cost in there, those are the benefits.
Thank you, that was a very inclusive answer. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions on the MSU contract? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Griffith? Contract, I believe?
Okay, board members, this is a recommendation for working forward this year with the Charm Foundation. Dr. Cooley?
Yes, this is the second year of a contract that we've had with, with Lynn Moore through the Charm Foundation, and it's a, it's about the third year we've been working with Charm, though. In the first year, we were working with them, we were one of the first elementary districts that were part of the program that they've been working with high schools prior to that. So, they were used to a model where they, they offered a coach that would work in one building. So, when they came to our school and had to go to multiple buildings, we, they found that a challenge. So, in the second year, which was last year, they, they said, "If you want to have Lynn as, as much as you have been, you know, you'll need to contribute a little bit." So, we decided that it was well worth it. So, when Lynn is in our district, she helps with our building mentors, and our district mentors, and she sits in at meetings in the buildings and at the district level, so she does a variety of things. This contract is, does not represent any increase from the prior year, and it's also fully paid through our Title II grant, which is, we use because she's mentoring and assisting our staff. Any questions?
Seeing none.
Just, board members, Title II is a term that's used to refer to the type of federal funding that goes to school districts nationwide for just general school improvement practices.
Any questions from the audience? So, I think we, we're going to approve them all. There will be, do I have a motion to approve the contracts as presented?
I move to vote separately on the contracts.
You want to, we can just proceed separately?
Second.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve the, Whipple Consulting contract?
So moved.
I second that.
This will be, for the discussion on the motion? So, this will be a roll call vote? Mr. Anderson?
I had a question.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Bill.
I apologize. Just during the discussion, Harry said, or Dr. Griffith said he was going to provide some comparable data for Anne. Are we going to vote in advance of that, or will he...
Um, you know, and we're not done collecting all that. Part of the complication, Bill, is comparable comparisons with districts who are using private sector services, for, for printing services, and trying to get it down to apples and apples. So, it's going to take a bit of time to do that.
Okay, and the goal, of course, is not to waste the district's time or, or resources, just to understand what we're voting on. But, if you're committing to getting us that information, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk? Mr. Anderson?
I'm, aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Nay.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. May I have a motion to approve the Cornelius Dubose contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please? Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the Michigan State contract. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then, we have the final contract with the Charmed Foundation. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, may I have a, oh, any further discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to the rest, which includes the approval of minutes from regular and executive session and, and a special meeting on June twenty-eighth, as well as an executive session on June twenty-second. The approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statement. June two thousand and eleven, disbursement and procurement card purchases totaling two million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. June two thousand and eleven, payrolls totaling one million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, and the June two thousand and eleven financial report. It includes the approval of human resource items, including leave requests, new staff, retirements, and status changes. The approval, oop, those have been removed, and the approval of employee settlement, the record of closed meetings, there are no audio recordings being destroyed. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk? Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you. This brings us to our FOIA requests. We had one FOIA request from Sutermat of the Chicago Tribune, and we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twenty-five? You didn't want me to have to count all the way up there? Twenty-five FOIA requests from Nancy Thorne in Lake Bluff. We did hold an executive session prior to the meeting this evening, and no action was taken at the executive session. This brings us to future agenda items. Is there anything that a board member would like added to a future agenda? Seeing none. Which brings us to our announcements. Tuesday, August sixteenth is new family orientation. Monday, August twenty-second to Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, our institute days with no student attendance. School walkthroughs will be held Wednesday, August twenty-fourth. On Thursday, August twenty-fifth is the first day of student attendance for grades one through eight. Monday, September fifth is Labor Day. Tuesday, September twenty-seventh is the, is our next Board of Education meeting, seven p.m., right here. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.